Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of Trinity County Planning Commission, October 23rd. Before we get started, can we please have a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. United States of America. The Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all.
I'd like to start the meeting off with a public comment.
Good evening, Chair and Committee. Alex Paniskovic, Associate Planner for Trinity County.
Public comment.
Okay.
Alex, I appreciate the introduction. Thank you. During public comment period, members of the public may address the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. We have no one present in the room. Do we have anyone on Zoom? Want to close public comment and proceed with the regular calendar? Item A, Community Development, Planning, Housing Element Related Updates to Title 17 Zoning Code. Staff?
Good evening, Chair and Commission. My name is Angel Chapel, and I am an Assistant Planner for the Planning Division. With the adoption and certification of the Seventh Cycle Housing Element for 2024 through 2029, we are tasked with updating our zoning ordinance and to seek funding. A key part of seeking funding is to obtain the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD's Pro-Housing Designation. The Pro-Housing Designation will open up funding opportunities which align with Program HE-1, HE standing for Housing Element. After Ryan with Mintier Harnish's presentation at the Board of Supervisors this past Tuesday, staff was directed to pursue the Pro-Housing Designation. Please be on the lookout for the Board's recorded meeting on the county's YouTube channel if you wish to see the full presentation. In order to pursue the Pro-Housing Designation, Program HE-3, Compliance with State Laws, will need to be implemented ahead of the zoning ordinance update in 2026. The zoning ordinances provided today are listed in the HE-3 program with the exception of the ADU Bonus Section, which aligns with Program HE-7, Accessory Dwelling Units. The ADU Bonus Section, we can adjust at the discretion of the Commission. The aim of this section is to incentivize ADU development to provide additional housing options and to gain additional points for the Pro-Housing Designation. The Pro-Housing Designation is based on a point system, and these points contribute to additional funds. This ties into the Pro-Housing Incentive Program that was discussed at the last Board meeting. If you have additional questions about the ordinances, Pro-Housing Designation, and/or the PIP, Pro-Housing Incentive Program, processes, Ryan and I will be available to answer these questions. Before I pass the floor to Ryan for any additional information he may wish to provide, I did want to mention that the Certified Housing Element is available on the Planning Division website and on the trinity2050.com website for the general plan update. Ryan, the floor is yours if you have any additional information you wish to provide.
Yeah, thank you, Angel. I would just say that, you know, just to reinforce what Angel said, these are updates that the county committed to in the housing element strictly for compliance with state law. So, other than the ADU Bonus Section, there are not things in here that are that aren't mandatory. We have, staff did a great job of trying to apply the state law simply without creating complications. And so that was our approach. How can we do this simply without creating a bunch of additional constraints by adding a bunch of zoning language in? How can we keep it simple so that folks know what to expect when they go to get a permit?
Thank you. As asked, does the Commission have any questions for staff?
I do. So, under single-family dwelling use, so I totally understand that single-family dwelling use now allows supportive housing. So, the supportive, that's item number two. Supportive housing definition includes a target population. The target population, you know, has a definition. My understanding is that supportive housing for those target populations is limited to six beds or less. So, you have, you know, six or less units, beds for residential care facility and small daycare? And why do you not have six beds or less for supportive housing?
So, I would just say that, you know, the code just says that transitional and supportive housing has to be allowed in the same way that residential uses are allowed in residential zones. So, we could differentiate between types that are closer to single-family as we have done for the other categories. That would be fine.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because a alcohol and drug detox center has been proposed for my district, and we've been communicating with the state Health Department. And, you know, Angel has been very helpful in explaining that 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 use, a single-family home with six beds or less, is appropriate for supportive housing for that type of someone with substance abuse, that target population. And so I'm just trying to figure out if I'm understanding that correctly, and if I am, then why is it not clear that supportive housing is limited to six or less beds?
I'm just looking at the program language. The language we included in the programs in the housing element is exactly what HCD would like to see. So, on that topic, they had us include "allow group homes or residential care facilities of seven or more" "in all zones allowing residential uses based on objective criteria to facilitate approval certainty" "and subject only to the requirements of residential uses of similar form in the same zone." So, I think that, you know, it depends on the actual housing type that's being used as well in this case. I'm not a lawyer, so, you know, I go based on the, what's included here, and I try to put that in the code. We could probably differentiate six or less, seven or more for that, but I would want to check with HCD on that.
I would not just check with HCD. I would check with the California Department of Health. And, because the codes that you cited to me, those were not HCD codes, correct?
Correct. Those were, at the time, a lot of them was the Health and Safety Code. But, the state Health Department will have different specific regulations that are different than what HCD wants to see.
So, do we need to also reference the State Department of Health, then? I think it's, what I'm getting at is, I think it needs to be clear to someone planning for that kind of activity what the criteria is in Trinity County. And I think they need to know if a single-family home, they can't have more than six beds for that type of target population.
When it comes to the health code versus like HCD and zoning ordinance, they're separate realms of responsibility. So, the, a lot of the health and safety requirements are handled through HHS and through, like, environmental health. And they have their own separate regulations to apply to these type of projects, just like we would with fire code or building code. And so, we only look at it from a zoning ordinance perspective and not, like, always fold in what happens within the doors. This is talking about where we can allow these uses. And so, that's what we have to adhere to.
But you have specifics for residential care and small family daycare that say six or less beds. So, why not have that specific for supportive housing?
Through the Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
I would say we should look into that, and if the Planning Commission would like to recommend that we include that there, we can. We would definitely check state law, of course, to make sure that that applies. I know in the case of the other, of the other ones that we did include it on, because HCD has looked for that language specifically. But we could definitely look into that, and we could include that if the Planning Commission would like us to.
So, I'm just one Planning Commissioner, but I just think it's good to be clear. So, you're talking about county building code and health and safety codes. And if in the county health and safety code, it does say that supportive housing is limited to six beds or less, I just think it helps to make that clear here.
The health and safety also have, like, several other breakdown categories for different types of facilities based on the services provided. And so, that's why we can't account for all of that within our code on what sort of licensing requirements they would have for these projects. And that's why there's a bit of a difference on the possibility of, like, how many beds in a more of a healthcare-centered supportive housing versus one that has, like, is providing housing for youth that's, like, out of the foster care system. There's different thresholds that health and safety have versus us. So, that's why we, we look at it as, from a purely, like, zoning standpoint of, is this use allowed? Yes, then we can't treat it differently than a single-family dwelling. Recuperative care, that's also like, like if elderly are coming out of the hospital and need a transition place to stay, that's allowed in single-family residential areas as well.
But that's not listed under target population.
It has its own separate.
Well, I'm looking at.
But, I'm using it as an example of another population that might have high health risk and need those additional medical facilities, and that's still allowed within single-family residential areas.
I understand that, but I'm specifically looking at the target population that is part of the definition of supportive housing.
And if I may, I think some of the nuance there is in sort of the middle of the target population definition or other chronic health conditions or individuals eligible for services provided under the Lanternman Developmental Disability Service Act. But if I'm tracking what you're saying, Commissioner Fall, you would like to see something that that directs a potential applicant to the other applicable standards. So, off the top of my head, and we can work it through with county council prior to taking it to the Board for adoption, but it would be something like, you know, also see the, or, you know, please be advised, you know.
Well, if you added, if you added a sentence that said, "The Health and Safety Code" "provides more detailed information regarding the number of beds allowed in each type of facility", I think that would help.
I do have mentioned, I believe somewhere in this, that they would still need to comply with health and safety and building codes.
Well, it says, it says structures, structures must adhere to building code and health and safety codes. And I'm, I'm talking about the number of beds, not just the structure. To me, you're, you know, okay. So, I think that implies that health and safety codes are like the building. And so, I'm just saying, the health and safety code, if you can clarify that it's more than that, it has limitations on the level of care needed and the number of beds and all that kind of stuff. I think that would be useful.
Sure. I think that's accomplishable.
So, maybe I should shut up and let the rest of the Commission weigh in.
Commissioners?
Oh, sorry, that's mine. Sorry. I turned it on. Sorry.
Commissioners? Okay. There's no other questions from Commissioners? Do you want to bring it back for a discussion? By the way, thank you to staff for doing all the hard work. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Angel. Thank you, everybody, for the big lift on helping us get through this. So, thank you very much. Be remiss if I didn't say thank you. Commissioners, discussion or adoption?
Is there any public comment on Zoom?
Thank you. Can we open up to public comment? No public comment in the room? No public comment on Zoom? That's a closed public comment. Commissioners?
For the purposes of discussion, I will move that the Planning Commission Support Resolution PC 2025-11, including Exhibit A, with the recommendation that the language be expanded to clarify that health and safety codes include things other than related to the structures, such as level of care, number of beds, et cetera.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a motion. Do we have any discussion?
For discussion, isn't that health, you know, in order to have one of these facilities, they, okay, it has to work within the zoning, but then they have to get their permits with HHS or some other agency that would be regulating or overseeing this level of care that they would be getting that information from?
To a certain extent. So, the facility in, proposed in my district, and again, I'm not opposed to the facility. I'm concerned that there's no opportunity for public input. There's no permit required. It's just if it's a single-family home and it's less than six beds or less, then you can have, you know, the facilities that are listed for single-family dwellings. They do have to meet fire codes and so forth, but there's no permit required from the county. There's no, well, there's no permit required, was what I was told.
Yeah, the, there's no permit required from Planning Division. For certain types of facilities, they would be required to get, like, a license, but it depends on what threshold they fall with, like, human health and services.
Level of care and stuff?
Yeah. So, that's not under the permission of Planning or zoning ordinance.
That license would say how many beds they would be able to have, what level of care they're able to provide, and those would be the state, state agencies?
State, I believe, and then also some of the, I guess, like, Health and Human Services and Behavior Health Services would be responsible for that area.
So, for the, so for the Drug and Detox Center, the State Department of Health has asked the Fire Department to do a fire inspection, and we are not required, not allowed to have anything beyond a regular fire inspections. But, that's it.
Yeah. Commissioner Fall, would this facility fall under Item 2, Supportive Housing?
Correct. Yes.
Does that definition in the staff-provided document not provide some clarity for that? As far as supportive housing means housing with no limit on length of stay that is occupied by target population, and then further down, target population means persons with low incomes having one or more disabilities, including mental illness, HIV/AIDS, substance abuse, and other chronic health conditions. And may include, among other, populations, adults, emancipated youth, families, families with children, elderly persons, young adults aging out of the foster care system, and individuals exiting from institutional settings, veterans and homeless people. Would that facility, I'm also asking, but would that facility not squarely fall within that?
It does. That's exactly the question. Is that, you know, in, in remote areas, let's say down in Ruth, you have a single-family home, and you want to have one of these six-bed or less facilities for a target population, the services may not match what that population really needs, but that's a whole separate issue. Because, in our experience, it's basically, this is what's going to happen, and that's it. And I think Ryan had, maybe he's going to correct me.
Please, Ryan.
So, I would just say that it is the intent of state law that you actually treat these like residential uses and permit them. You know, whether, whether or not we may agree with it, the intent of the state law is that you not deny these on basis other than the form and shape of the building, as I understand the language in state law.
Thank you for that clarification. I guess my point of view is, I think there's probably a mental health crisis and substance abuse crisis. If someone is meeting all the county criteria and they want to buy a 10-bedroom home and provide care to the people mentioned in this list, and they meet all state-approved guidelines, who are we to say what they can, what they can do? I mean, if they're, if they're meeting all the criteria, then they're providing a much-needed service. That's my opinion. And while I do respect your concerns for obvious reasons, and I support that, but I don't know that, I don't know that we're the people for that.
Angel, were you saying that the six beds or less is tied to a specific licensing size? So, like, let's talk about daycares, right? So, you can have smaller, large daycares in homes. And so, the small only permits up to eight kids, and then the large permits up to 12. And so, are you saying there's a structure similar to that where there would be different sizes? And then the licensing would be under a different license, essentially?
With, specifically to the family cares, it's whether or not they would be licensed as a care facility for children. That's where that threshold comes in. That's a little different than the other situations. But with, with the other, like, housing situations, the Health and Human Services, Behavior Health Service, even at the state level, they have their own licensing thresholds of what type of license you need in order to run these different care facilities, and the number of people you treat. And even, like, building codes have limitations on the maximum number of occupancy for a structure. So, we wouldn't be, like, cramming 30 people in a three-bedroom house because of the building codes. It wouldn't allow for that.
So, does this, like, the residential care facility in the small family daycare on page two, that was changed to six or less units per beds? And then, on page one, we have group housing care and residential care facility, seven or more units per beds for both of those. Is that coming out of the building code, or is that coming out of Health and Safety Code?
I can answer that. So, those are coming out of what is allowed by state law. So, for, when we do the housing element, HCD reviews state law and looks and provides comments, and they've allowed us to do six or less or seven or more because it's in state law somewhere. As I said before, I can check to see if that's also associated with supportive housing types. And if so, get that information as well. But I've never run across it, it related to supportive housing.
Thank you for that clarification. I mean, if we're, if we're having it for a discussion, and Ryan is able to provide that after a little further investigation, then I believe our concerns would be pretty squared away. Commissioners?
I kind of agree on limitations either way. It's going to, it's going to cut down on the amount of help. So, when you say less or more or anywhere, I mean, I think in our county, we're not really worried about someone building a 20-room place and opening a thing and getting, having, jumping through less hoops.
Yeah, I'd see the other side too of clearly communicating what the limit is upfront. If we, if there is one, and we know what it is, to help our community members that want to develop these housing styles, help them have clear communication. But, if it's dependent on licensing outside of building, then I think we just let that plan out as it, as it falls.
Commissioners? Any further discussion?
So, the facility in Trinity Center is someone from Los Angeles buying a home and, you know, applying for the state to, you know, put in supportive housing. And again, I recognize that people need that type of housing. I'll put my fire department hat on for a minute and say, the fire department's concerned about responding to, you know, as volunteers to facilities that need a higher level of care. And so, anyway, that's kind of why I'm trying to clarify what the criteria are so that people coming in from Los Angeles will know kind of what we expect. Anyway, that's, that's my rant.
Chair, if I may? Please. So, I, you know, basically, since what we're doing is to gain compliance with state law, the standard that would be applied in LA, as an example, would be equivalent to, or greater than, the standard that we're applying in Trinity County.
But they have a greater ability to respond to these facilities.
Right, but not lesser than. So, you know, in order to be compliant with state law, the standard is what it is in terms of, you know, the questions about the state-level requirements and licensing guidelines. I don't know if Ryan has dug anything up, but from what I can see, it looks like much of this may have come from the Supportive Housing Initiative Act of 2001. And then, there's also the Mental Health Services Act that clearly sort of delineates the supportive housing licensing guidelines and how the state determines what those thresholds are for those subsets of supportive housing. But, I want to also mention that, you know, as part of the broader objective to pursue the Pro-Housing program and the Pro-Housing Incentive Program, certainly some of these, you know, points that you're bringing up in terms of, you know, first responder capacity in our, you know, rural fire districts is something that, you know, myself, as well as a, you know, volunteer firefighter, I'm definitely tracking on. I'm definitely tracking on. And I think that we'll certainly have some discussion likely with the Planning Commission and the Board as we go forward. Once we receive approval from HCD for the pro-housing designation, as we put together the application for the pro-housing incentive program in terms of how we can best prioritize the use of funds. And we may be able to address, you know, some of the concerns that you have in terms of first responder capacity in our rural areas.
May I ask, just out of interest, has every other county except for Trinity County adopted this to date? Or are there others that are still outstanding?
I personally don't know. I think we, from the information that we've talked through, um, many jurisdictions have not chosen to take the leap into the pro-housing designation program. However, you know, all of the counties are required to be in compliance with state law. You know, we can use Trinity County as an example to point out that we have been non-compliant for, you know, some period of time. And so really the benefit here, rather than waiting until, um, you know, later 2026, and then the potential of being able to apply for a pro-housing incentive program grant funds. At that point, you know, in the twenty-seven calendar year, potentially twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year, this is just moving it forward so that we can gain the resources to, you know, accomplish what is required either way by state law. Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion from the Commissioners? Okay, so we can have a vote, please?
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Fall?
Aye.
Commissioner Flights?
Aye.
Commissioner Harper?
Aye.
Commissioner, Chair Barrett?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask for a point of clarification? I didn't get in my notes who seconded Commissioner Falls.
Duncan.
Thank you.
Commissioner McIntosh? Moving on with our calendar. Item B, Community Development Planning, Zoning, Code Three, Code Part Three, Study Session Review. Staff?
Being Chair and Committee, my name is Alex Beniskovich, Associate Planner with Trinity County. Thank you. I've compiled a list of notes from, comments from the Planning Commission meeting on August fourteenth of this year. It has both community feedback as well as feedback and questions and concerns from the Planning Commission. If it pleases the Chair, I could go through those line by line, or if the committee prefers to go at it at their own time or bring up certain questions from it, we are here to answer any of those questions.
Thank you very much. I believe the Commissioner and I have spent a lot of time reviewing this, so I don't think that will be necessary. Thank you, though. Commissioners, any clarifying questions for staff?
Yeah, so for clarity, is the offering to go through our recommended amendments line by line? Which I think that might, that might be good to just refresh our memories on what, what the changes we were recommending or discussing were a couple of months ago.
Correct, the, uh, we can go line through line through what is written here if that is what the committee would like.
I guess I would be more concerned with targeting any discrepancies rather than trying to go line by line for expediency and efficiency, but, um...
I like that.
Okay.
You okay with that? Commissioners, clarification on any issues?
Well, I just want to ask, um, Alex, so did, did our feedback for the most part make sense to you? I mean, were there questions that you had as far as was there a consensus or did we seem pretty uniform? Yeah?
It seemed from review of the meeting that there was a general consensus on the part of the Commission to the comments that were captured in this document. As far as personal preference, I, I believe that some of it made sense for sure.
Yay.
The third line?
I could also provide my shortlist of topics that I took note on when we reviewed this last time, which is a handful of items that I, I said that we would revisit if, if you would like to do it that way. Or, or we can just leave it as is, and if, if you remember what you want to revisit, then we can, and up to you.
I, I think my bigger concern is just making sure that, you know, these comments make it in or there's a discussion as to why the comments that we made can't be incorporated, either because it, it's undermining state code and so then we can't go backwards. I think we ran into that, we discussed that about the fencing and that kind of stuff. So, um, I think that, as far as I'm concerned, that's the next step that needs to happen. I need to see these incorporated into it and, and see the topics that needed further investigation. I have that complete before I have more valuable feedback at this point in time.
Understood, and I would like to also clarify that upon review of the recording of this, I believe that Drew did mention that we would be compiling as much feedback from the Commission as possible through these meetings and implementing them more so towards the end in, in the final draft.
So do you have, has Mentor Harnish made any progress as far as them taking all their notes and implementing those changes?
Since we're still, let's say, a few, if not a handful of months out from, you know, the final document assembly, you know, Nikki, who was part of, the last time we reviewed this, did provide us the notes. Alex compared it to, you know, his notes from the recording. So the question that I have for you all in terms of, you know, when we get back around to reviewing the consolidated code after we do the next couple of meetings to, to look through the rest of it, would it be helpful then to identify the changes that the Commission requested? Sort of call those out specifically so they're highlighted in some fashion for when we bring that, you know, sort of final assembled, completed zoning code forward for, for our final review prior to the formal adoption hearings, which is my understanding of how this will go. So sometime in the spring, this will, you know, in its full form, come back for review in advance of, you know, the formal hearings which will happen later in 26. I think that would be, that's right, I think that would be very beneficial.
Yeah, it seemed like, you know, we had some, a lot of very specific comments that would be easy to show that those have been incorporated. And then we had some general comments like landscaping about needing to add the fire safe elements and signage, you know. We had major changes to those and we didn't recommend specific language. So those are the ones where it seems like we'd want to, in addition to seeing the specific stuff we already covered, see what is being proposed.
Yeah, I think at, at that point, we had shifted tactics to, um, to expedite that meeting, yeah.
So I guess for me, um, uh, thank you, Alex, for compiling the notes. On these notes, was there anything that set off, uh, one of a better word, red flags? Like things we were asking for that was, um, an issue? Or any future updates? No, not, not to my, not for my review. I know that in my shortlist of topics, one of the things that came up, which Commissioner Fall, I think, was just alluding to, related to some potential conflict between the new Zone Zero regs and the MWOLO regs. I've taken a little bit of time to review that more closely, and I don't see any conflict between Zone Zero and MWOLO. But I think they align well, and there's no, there shouldn't be any conflict because essentially as it relates to Zone Zero, you wouldn't be able to have landscaping. So, um, water, that would be, the most water-efficient landscaping would be no, um... No landscaping. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff. Do we want to open it up to public comment if there's no further clarifying questions for staff? Can we open up to public comment? There's no one in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom? We're going to close public comment and bring it back to the Commissioners for a motion and discussion. Commissioners? And I, I just want to point out that this is a discussion item. So, you know, I don't know that any formal action needs to be taken, but if you want to give us direction to staff. As you know, I'm very formal, so yes, sir. Commissioners?
Well, I guess I'll repeat what Amelia said. I think if they can go ahead and incorporate the specific comments and get those back to us, and then at some point come up with what they're going to do on the fuzzier parts. I think we'll look at it when it comes back in its final form. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, yep.
And adding, adding another color would be fun.
And so when this goes to the community review, where will our suggestions be in that document for the community to see?
Yes. Then that compiled document will come before you all in conjunction with the completed public review draft for another final review several months in advance of, you know, the, the formal hearings for adoption.
Okay, so we're going to get a marked-up version with our notes incorporated for a comment to say like, can't do this because of state laws, correct? And then we approve that, and then it goes to public comment in a clean draft? Or we're giving a messy draft to the public?
I think what will be presented to you all in terms of, you know, so let's, let's make sure we're all on the same page there. With some of the previous parts, no track changes were provided because it just gets overly cumbersome. So I'd have to confirm for the other parts that are forthcoming whether or not Mentor Harnish is going to provide a consolidated track changes version. But I, I think I would commit to publishing the existing track changes versions that have been provided throughout, you know, these various study sessions and going forward so that all of those track changes are available in a document form. And then for final zoning code adoption, I would need to confirm with the zoning code team to, to clarify whether or not there will be a strike-through and underline version provided to... If it's provided to the Commission and the Board, it's provided to the public. But I know that it gets quite, you know, it, it could basically triple the length of the pages in a track change version, just, just even moving things around, not even making any substantive changes, and it gets quite confusing where you, you're moving something from one section to another. So if you're using strike-through and underline to, you know, annotate the, the changes, then what you have anytime you move something from one section to another, whether or not the language has changed, is a whole section of track change, you know, a whole section of strike-through and a whole section of underline just to move it from, you know, part D to part A as a simple example.
So, um, as to clarify my, my point, my preference is to have the track changes come to us, but when it's going out to public comment, have a clean draft and not, not all the track changes, but, um, I'll let the other Commissioners weigh in on their thoughts.
Agreed.
Sounds wonderful. Okay.
They don't need to see the sausage.
Excuse me? So then, is that all staff requires to, uh, get us moving? Yeah, if there's no other specific, you know, comments for tonight, um, we have this compiled list. You know, we'll work with Mentor Harnish to make sure it's included into, you know, the, the final compiled version. Taken a note to have it, you know, we'll, we'll figure out exactly the format of how we identify Planning Commissioner requested changes, comments, whether or not, you know, for some reason, you know, they weren't able to be accommodated and, and figure out, you know, how to denote that, whether that's with highlights or, you know, comments on the side of, of one of the versions or just in the narrative perhaps of the, of the body of the staff report. You, you like that format?
I would suggest that you follow, well, like, as you provided this, you could follow this and say added, can't add because of state law, added, you know. And then this is a simple, flat way that we're already familiar with, and then we know which components of our comments were incorporated. And then, yes, still track them in like a separate color in here, but you don't need to put the comments in the, in the full track changes would be my recommendation.
I, I, I agree that I think that's probably a great way to present changes generally. Instead of, you know, like I was referencing, you know, there being a strike-through and an underline for anything that moves. So we can come up with, you know, some summary that's provided, you know, maybe it'll be an executive summary or something like that to, to the final zoning code updates. That sounds great. Commissioners, any other discussion before we move on with our, uh, calendar?
Not at this time, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. That concludes our regular calendar. We're going to move on to Planning Commissioner reports. Any Planning Commissioner reports? No Planning Commissioner reports. Deputy Director of Community Development reports? There is no longer a seated Deputy Director of Community Development, but I'm interim Planning Director for the moment, so I will give a, a brief report out. We have been working towards formally re-establishing the Airport Land Use Commission. And in that process, we have discovered that although the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, which was created in 2009, is the primary document that has existed on the county website as a reference point for Airport Land Use Compatibility and land uses. We recently discovered that there was, thanks to DOT Transportation Planning Staff, that there was a 2013 resolution that modified some of the sections of the existing or the 2009 Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And specifically what that changes is who the members of the Airport Land Use Commission are. And so in the, in the 2009 Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, there were some appointments that needed to be made by the Board in that 2013 resolution. Pleased to inform you all that, that you have been volunteered to be five of the seven members of the Airport Land Use Commission. There are two additional members of that seven-person body. I just volunteered you. I think, I think I'm the secretary, so I've already been volunteered as well. Angel and Alex, it is. So there are two members.
So can we, can we appoint an alternate? I mean, we have several pilots in my area who have been attending these meetings and are very interested, and so...
So then there are two members of that seven-person committee, Commission, that are appointed by the Airport Director, who is the Department of Transportation Director. So from the Airport Advisory Committee, two members will be appointed to the Airport Land Use Committee. That is, that is clearly established in the 2013 resolution. So we have been, um, we've, we've noticed the vacancies for both the Airport Advisory Committee and the Lewiston Architectural Review Committee. And we are tracking towards appointments being made on November the fourth, Board of Supervisors meeting. Subsequent to that, it will be, you know, the Director of Transportation slash Airport Manager's duty to appoint two members of the AAC to the ALUC. Who is that Director? What's? So that's Panos.
So...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, just...
So how have you noticed the vacancies?
How have we noticed the vacancies? What I can say is that I believe they are on the bulletin board at the courthouse, and they are on the county website somewhere, I'm not entirely sure. But I worked with CAO's office staff to develop... But I worked with CAO's office staff to, um, develop the vacancies for the Lewiston Architectural Review Committee recruitment, if you will. And the Transportation Planner from the Department of Transportation has worked with CAO's, uh, CAO staff to, um, create the vacancy posting for the Airport Advisory Committee. And so those appointments hopefully will be made on this coming board meeting, so...
So, this, this is really worrying me, sorry. Because, like I said, we have pilots who have been attending these meetings, and they don't know anything about this. They don't know...
I believe that they do, because we've gotten a number of, um, requests to be appointed from existing pilots in the county, so, that, that have been involved in, in these committees and, or, and/or commissions.
And who, how does Panos pick them?
I could not, uh, tell you how that appointment is made. It is not specified in the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan.
So people, yeah...
I, I, I sense some, uh, resistance to that, but I, I'll be sure to provide additional clarification as soon as I have it. So what I wanted to confirm with you all, given that, uh, you know, five of you are now, um, on the Airport Land Use Commission, um, in terms of trying to schedule an Airport Land Use Commission public hearing for November the thirteenth, are you all available earlier than six P M? Or would you prefer to start the Airport Land Use Commission meeting at six P M? Go through the project, adjourn it, and then jump into Planning Commission, Planning Commissioner mode?
I'm not available earlier that day. I'm sorry.
Neither, neither will I be.
And would it be acceptable to, um, notice that it will start at six o'clock? We'll go through, um, convening of the Airport Land Use Commission, and then jump into Planning Commission, adjourn that, and then jump into a Planning Commission meeting directly following?
The interest of...
I, I, I'm sorry. I would like to know a little bit more about what we are expected to do on that commission, and what the timelines are, and what the scope, like, of the proj- or, or just a little bit more, that, before I provide an answer as to if I want to double team a meeting night, or if we want to split them up or something.
Fair enough. So then should we schedule some sort of, um, discussion item for the thirteenth to get us all oriented to the scope and duties of, uh, Airport Land Use?
Well, I guess my question is, is this going to be like a one-hour item? Or is this a three-hour item that then we're going to try to do Planning Commission meeting after?
I, I mean, of course, you know, none of us can predict, um, what level of public comment we receive, but assuming that there's not several hours of public comment, I think it would be less than an hour. Um, it's a reasonably simple project. It has approvals from the respective, um, state agencies. It's just, you know, I don't want to, I'll call it a formality, um, that we, we have to, you know, hold that public hearing and, and convene the Airport Land Use Commission.
Okay, that provides clarification for me.
Can, can you give me the schedule again for, uh, when the vacancies are, have to be submitted, that deadline, when it goes to the Board of Supervisors for their approval?
They're on the website right now. They were up as of the fifteenth.
And they're due by when?
November, so the date of the appointment can be made, November fourth, for the Airport Advisory Committee. I don't, it actually has a due date. Oh, sorry, no, um, interest letters must be submitted, no letter than four P M on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth.
Thanks.
And then for the Architectural Review Committee, it says the same.
So...
And then those would both go to both the Airport Advisory Commission, those two members, and the Lewiston Architectural Review Committee members would go to the Board of Supervisors on November fourth?
That's my understanding of what is tentatively being, um, proposed for that meeting.
And so, um, one of the people on the Lewiston Architectural Review Committee has to be a representative from the Historical Society that's specified. And so that person, um, if you could include that in the board packet, is Darryl Forsland. I've already met with the Historical Society and determined he would be the representative. Okay, thank you.
I certainly, in the interest of efficiency, would have no problem trying to schedule those two meetings and get it one and done, so... Thank you.
We'll do our best to, uh, you know, give all the, uh, necessary information, and of course, if, you know, during that public hearing, if it feels like, you know, there's not enough understanding, guidance, or clarity, um, you know, that can be continued to a, to a later date to, to provide, you know, more context and information and, and the scope of, um, what you all as five of the seven, um, members of the Airport Land Use Commission...
And we could propose that that resolution in two thousand and thirteen be changed, right, to take us off?
You could provide that as directions.
So, it does say that the frequent, in, in, in the Airport Advisory Committee bylaws, the meetings should be held at nine A M on the third Friday of January, April, July, and October, and then special meetings called by the Director of Transportation. So, will we be expected to, in the future, hold quarterly meetings?
So, um, the Airport Advisory Committee, there are two members from that, which I'll refer to as the AAC. What you guys are a part of as the Planning Commission is the ALUC, the Airport Land Use Commission. So, um, I, I have not seen in the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan any specific requirement to convene on a regular basis. Um, I think it's similar to the Subdivision Review Committee where it con- convenes on an as-needed basis for project review.
Does state online six thirty P M on the second Thursday of the month, as needed.
You're looking at the Airport Advisory.
I'm now looking at Airport Land Use Commission.
Okay.
It states, for some reason, six thirty P M on the second Thursday of the month.
It, it does state that, however, I don't think that that is actually included into the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. So I believe that that was a, um, you know, policy or administrative decision that happened at some point in the past, but I haven't seen a specific requirement to convene on any, um, given, you know, interval in the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. One thing I will note there is also that, um, we are not, we need, we need to clarify exactly how and/or if we need to update the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan to capture the language that's in Resolution two thousand and thirteen dash forty, which then changes Section two-point-three, um, which is who is on the ALUC. Um, so that's something we're working on. I'm not sure if that will come to the P C or to the Board, or how that will work, but more things for us to figure out. So thank you all for your willingness to participate in the Airport Land Use Commission.
Could we just have that then removed from the website, so that it, yeah?
She's asking that we remove that standing meeting date, the reference to that on the website under the Land Use Commission. We're also going to put, if it's not up yet, we're going to put, um, Resolution two thousand and thirteen dash forty um, next to it, and we'll continue to work through, um, how and/or if we need to update the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, um, and we'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, on, on the times, if everybody could come a little bit earlier, depending on what your work schedule is. Not necessarily wait until six, but even if it was five thirty, would ga- would gain a half an hour into that meeting. Just wanted everybody's input on that, maybe?
I'm fine with five thirty.
And, and what I'll say is that in the way that the, the language for the existing, you know, the noticing for the existing Planning Commission meetings is structured, it says six P M or as soon as possible thereafter, or something of that sort, so we could just say five thirty. If everyone's able to show up a few minutes early, we can kick it off early. Um, we just wouldn't be able to start P C before six, if that's the way the noticing reads. So, sound like a plan? We'll just throw it out there as a five thirty start, and we can start as, as, you know, as soon as possible, or at six, if that's what works for everyone.
That might help make the night not quite as long anyways.
And then, what did we decide for the November, oh, twentieth meeting? Is that going to be early? Are we having a meeting on November?
November thirteenth, is that the Rattlesnake Mine abandonment?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then I think we had talked about, um, pre, at the last Planning Commission meeting, a December eleventh meeting.
At two o'clock?
When I talked that through after our meeting with Mentor Harnish, they asked that I, um, reach out to you all to see if we could do the twentieth as a special meeting, if I'm remembering correctly.
November twentieth, right.
Right, that is not happening, so we're staying on course with what you all, um, directed us to do, which is, um, December the eleventh for the next part of zoning code review study session.
Okay, at two o'clock?
It, it could be three o'clock, um, you know, I, I was not totally joking when I said, should we give ourselves eight hours? But three, three o'clock probably works just as well.
My last, uh, meeting with the Chair, I can guarantee it's not going to be eight hours, so... I'll, I'll decide when my last meeting is.
Will happen on the first meeting of February.
Okay. Um, thank you for the presentation. And again, staff, thank you for, uh, preparing all the documents tonight. And Debbie, thank you very much for taking initiative and printing it all out. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
And, um, I want to adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.
Good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
One hour.
All right.